Good evening. Can you hear me? Yeah, good. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided and advertised at the appropriate places. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Mello?
Here.
Mrs. Severino?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mrs. Caden?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, there is no executive session at this time, so we're going to move to Section 3, Committee of the Whole. Can I get a motion to enter Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so tonight, first, I wanted to thank everyone for wearing, we're going to wear our masks for the whole time tonight. We're going to do our best to enunciate so that everyone can hear us as we discuss things tonight. What we wanted to do is go over some COVID, surprise, surprise, COVID-related topics. This is, while COVID is not new, this type of school year where we're all back in school together is still fairly new to us, and so we wanted to go over some of the things that have been going on and kind of get some clarity around some of those things. So I kind of mentioned or texted everyone, let them know sort of what the agenda was, and I'll let Dr. McDowell kind of choose the order he wants to go in, but we wanted to talk about how pool testing is going to work because the district is getting ready to roll some of that out, the rationale behind it, why we're doing it, review protocols for what happens when a student or students need to quarantine because as we're now almost into October, that's something that has definitely come up, and talk a little bit about the new COVID vaccine policy that we'll have in place to follow the governor's executive order. So you get to choose, Dr. McDowell, what we talk about first, but those are the topics we wanted to make sure to cover during Committee of the Whole.
Is there a fourth option? So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I think it's important to kind of set the stage in terms of where we are as a school system. So I can speak with confidence that in every school, there is energy and excitement. We are glad to have the students back in class. Teachers and instructional staff are focusing the bulk of these beginning weeks on re-establishing connections and relationships with students, really assessing both formally and informally where children are, and formulating what their learning acceleration plans will be, which will aggressively ramp up late October, early November. But the bulk of their time right now is helping children to successfully transition, many of whom have not physically been in a school space in almost 18 months. There is social-emotional learning that is being heavily emphasized in order to make sure that there are daily check-ins to ensure that children are okay despite the noise, the chaos, the anxiety, and the frustration that is happening in their world. We want to make sure that there are minimal or drastically reduced barriers that prevent students from accessing the full scope of the curriculum. So those are some of the things that we're really focused on right now. Please keep in mind that this is a fluid situation, and the only thing that is constant is that change will continue to happen. At the onset of this important work in terms of the safe return, we thanked our community multiple times for their patience and grace, and we're going to continue to thank our community for their continued patience and grace as we move this work forward. In terms of where we are as a school system with regards to health and safety, one part of the critical lever, and the second being teaching and learning, but in the areas of health and safety, we are finalizing or planning for a robust and comprehensive testing program. We, in the southwest region, are in high status in terms of viral transmission. That's orange. In terms of as a county, so Camden County is straight red, approaching very high status. Per the Department of Health recommendations, it is strongly encouraged and recommended that in order for schools to remain open, a robust testing program be implemented in order to identify pockets or areas where viral prevalence may exist in order to make sure that contact tracing can be implemented to keep schools open and to isolate or quarantine the lowest number of children per the recommendations. With the recommendation being any time that a young person is in an area unmasked closer than six feet for a prolonged period of time of 15 minutes or more, they run the risk of possible quarantine if that child or staff member is a confirmed case of COVID-19. And we'll be able to talk a little bit more about that a little bit later. In terms of vaccination, so per Executive Order 253, all educational staff, so anyone who works in a school facility, whether they are full-time, part-time, or volunteer, will be subject to the executive order which requires for them to either be fully vaccinated or subject to weekly COVID testing in order to maintain employment or status within said facility. We contracted with a vendor last month, and we have been working on the logistics in concert with our education associations and our school leadership teams to strike the right balance so that testing is not a disruption to teaching and learning. We will be finalizing that plan, and it will be included in this week's school reopening plan update that will be going out by the end of the week, not to be confused with the weekly update, which is driven by staff and driven by our educators, which is really a celebration of student learning and effective educator practice. In addition, we, last month, received board approval to provide targeted instructional support for students who have to quarantine due to a close contact or due to a positive COVID case. We have been working daily to try to fill the staffing requirements for this program, and as of today, have been unable to do so. We are hoping to have a different outcome by the end of this week. We will continue to focus on filling those positions. This is a national problem, so roles like this, bus drivers, instructional aides, targeted instructional support, academic support, teachers, substitute teachers across the country and specifically across the region are at a severe shortage. So we are asking for flexibility and patience while we work through this, but we are hoping to have a finalized plan by the end of this week paired with clarification around quarantine, clarification around what constitutes a close contact. When we talk about close contact, there is no finite definition for a close contact. Close contacts are at the guidance of the New Jersey Department of Health as well as the school nurse and the leadership team, and they are done on a case-by-case basis. So it may not look the same in every school because every school is configured differently, and the level of exposure will look different based on the school, based on grade band, and based on the time of day. So what will potentially, in one school, be no close contact during a specific period of time? There may be the need for three, four, five, six students to be quarantined, or, dependent on grade band, maybe the entire class. This is an ongoing and a fluid situation, but our collective goal is to follow the science, follow the guidance from the Department of Health, but to minimize the level of disruption that students are receiving due to these safety precautions and these safety measures. That's the high-level overview. I think it may be more pertinent for board members, if they have very targeted questions, to be able to do so at this time.
I wanted to start us off just with what you were saying a minute ago with the close contacts. So just thinking through the procedure, because I think by now, anyone that's got a student in the schools either this year or last year has received one of those letters, right, that says there was a confirmed case at the school? So that goes to each specific... Sorry, let me back up. So... Thank you, sorry about that. Thank you for the reminder. So what I was saying was, anyone that has a student in the schools either this year or last year has most likely at this point received one of the emails that says there was a confirmed case of COVID at blank school. And so I was kind of trying to back up from there, thinking through the process of... So the school gets notified by either a parent or the Department of Health that a positive case has happened. The nurse speaks with or talks with the Department of Health, consults with them, I guess, as well as the principal, and I'm assuming potentially teacher, whoever else would need to be involved to determine whether the, who else would be a close contact. And then those specific families are notified separate of that email, right? Everybody gets the email that goes to that school, but not everybody gets an email about whether they're a close contact or a phone call, or how does that part work?
So that's correct. So in terms of the process, so once it has been determined that there is a positive case within that particular school, the nurse and the Department of Health, they take over. They take over, and they make sure that there is direct contact. Generally, it happens via telephone. With those individuals, it's also followed up via email with those individuals, and the date of return is determined at that time. The school principal or the building administrator then alerts the board office, and the specific information that we're looking for is then loaded into a notification that goes to that specific school community. We believe that that was the best approach. The New Jersey Department of Health has strongly recommended against notifying any individual other than a close contact. So we actually decided as a district at the onset or the beginning of this pandemic that we did want to be transparent with our community, and we felt that if there was a case within that school, that particular school community needed to be alerted, and that's what we've continued to do for the last two years.
To come back into school, do the students have to have a negative test or be symptom-free? What's the requirement there? And then, just on top of that as well, last year, was the county handling contact tracing? And has that shifted over to us now? Or, because I remember this being an issue early on where the county was saying they would reach out to everyone. I'm just curious like what that, the process looks like, particularly even if it's outside the classroom?
So the county is in partnership. What the county found was that they were overwhelmed and did not have the bandwidth in order to do it justice. So they handed it over to schools over a year ago, and it's done in consultation. So every school has a direct point of contact in the event that there is a positive case, whether the case notification has come from the Department of Health or whether it is us alerting the Department of Health. At the conclusion of each of those, the school's responsibility to make sure that the countywide and the state data is accurate is we then have to submit a report for every single case, students or staff, to the county, and then they are able to actually tabulate that, and then that goes into their records, which then becomes publicly available information.
And in terms of coming back after, do they have to have a negative test or some...
So generally, the dependent, so right now, because we are in high status, we've now shifted to 14 days. Whereas when we were at moderate status, there was a recommendation of 10 days. Students who produced a negative test within five to seven days had the potential to be able to come back if it was a confirmed negative, but that would be confirmed through the nurse's office. But right now, it's 14 days.
14 days and with a negative test, like are they required to be tested? Every student that's been a close contact?
So it's 14 days, and testing is not a factor for them to return.
So I have a couple questions. I'm trying to organize them. That sounds like a lot of people. What is the delay time to get that information gathered at the school and then sent out to families?
Generally, it's pretty fast. So, I mean, a scenario would be is that if we found out at 8:00, generally be within the hour. That notification process begins, and contact tracing is done shortly after that. Generally, within an hour of initial notification, the board office receives either a phone call, text, or an email from the school alerting us that there has been a case. And what we try to do is we try to make sure that the school-wide notification happens after close contacts have already been contacted directly. So generally, it comes out either right at the middle of the day, around 12 or 1:00, or it comes at the end of the day, depending on when we receive it. But if it comes later in the day, then it would generally be 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night, depending on when we receive that notification.
Okay, I have a couple quick follow-ups too. Who at the building is making the determination of close contact? And do they have some sort, and I realize you're maybe tightening that up, but is there a framework that they're using at the building level to decide?
So the school nurses are using the guidance provided by the Department of Health. And they are the ones, once a positive case has been confirmed, school nurses are then in charge of that process, in partnership with the Department of Health, but also in partnership with the principal.
Okay, thanks. And the last is just a clarifying thing. I've heard concerns that if a family has children in multiple schools, that they may not get the information. But it sounds to me like if I had two kids, and one is at a school where they were close contact, I'm going to get notified anyway, so then my kid that goes to the other school, I will make a decision about that. Am I hearing that correctly? And if I have a child in another school, but my child in the infected school, excuse me, that's a terrible term, the school with the infection wasn't a close contact, I may not need to know that anyway to protect my second child?
Correct. So a contact of a contact, unless, if that individual is asymptomatic, they do not quarantine. If there is a sibling of an infected child, they would quarantine.
I just had one question. And this is with regards to the personnel needed to hire to instruct the quarantined individuals with the idea that this is a national problem. Is there a Plan B being formulated? Is there something else that's being considered if the personnel cannot be found?
Yes. We will get very creative with schedules in order to make sure that some level of targeted support is provided to the affected children.
I had some questions about the pool testing. The, so testing of students, we talked about this a bit last board meeting. Is there a protocol for how the randomization will happen and how families and, I guess, parents will provide consent for that testing?
So that process will be finalized by Close of Business Wednesday. So at a very high level, parent consent forms will be going out shortly. The database will be established at each school. And generally, based on the continuum of where we fall in terms of viral prevalence, it would be a 10% random sampling at each school that is pool-tested weekly for children who are not fully vaccinated. So at the middle and the high school, for students that are fully vaccinated, they would be removed from the pool of students needing to be tested.
So it sounds as if there's just going to be like a blanket consent that is given to parents, so parents are going to...
No, it'll be by grade band.
Okay.
Generally, we will be using a saliva test for the younger learners. There will be the nasal swab for older learners, and there will be rapid testing for student athletes. So there'll be different forms based on the activities that students are participating in and the grade band.
But that's just like one consent that the parents or guardians will have to sign at the beginning?
Yes.
And then so not like every single time?
No.
It comes up?
No.
And then with the, with the testing for the vaccine policy mandate requirement, have you decided on how many times per week unvaccinated staff or volunteers would have to be tested?
So we're still shoring up those numbers, but what we're trying to do is we're trying to strike the right balance to make sure that it is not a disruption to the learning environment. So right now, where we're sitting is once per week. But we're talking about a very small percentage of our educators within our spaces. As a district, we're about 75% across the board fully vaccinated. So we're talking about a very small number of individuals. So, but right now, we're looking at once per week.
And are we provide, are we providing the testing for them? Or are they to be, to go and show the results?
We will be providing the testing for them should they so choose. If they do not choose, they can go to their healthcare provider.
Got it.
But we will have it available through the district.
Does anybody have any other questions around any of these?
Just around the pool test thing. What's the turnaround rate for the tests that the kids, like at what point would we know if somebody's testing positive?
Generally, it's 24 or 36 hours.
And then I guess, what, so what happens, and maybe we're not here yet, if, you know, through this, we discover a pocket of, you know, asymptomatic infected kids? What happens then?
So in that case, the Department of Health would then take over and provide guidance. The contact tracing would determine whether or not transmission originated from within the school or from an external variable, and then they would make a recommendation. So the Department of Health has the authority to either close a specific school or close an entire district based on their contact tracing. So once it was determined, they would then consult us with the appropriate next step.
Anything else? I appreciate you taking the time to go over some of that with us because as I said, this is all kind of, not kind of, this is all new territory for everyone. So hopefully, that was helpful and cleared some things up for folks. Can I get a motion to exit Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we are going to move on to Section 4 of the agenda, Presentations. Ms. Coleman, would you please swear in these, our two, two of our three new student reps?
Repeat after me, okay? I state your name.
I, Anna Shur.
De solemnly swear.
De solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I state your name. De solemnly swear.
De solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Described by law.
Described by law.
For the office of the State of New Jersey.
For the State of New Jersey.
I'm not disqualified.
I'm not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
I'm not disqualified due to a conviction.
I'm not disqualified due to a conviction.
Of a crime or offense.
Of a crime or offense.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And just as a formal duty.
And just as a formal duty.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
It's longer than the President of the United States. Congratulations, lady.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
We're very excited to have you. And Anna, while I am very excited for you too, I was just saying to Reagan, I'm very excited to have another Reagan sitting next to me. It's quite possibly the first one I've ever met in person.
I said you too. I said, "Say, leader," tonight.
It's very exciting. So we look, we look forward to getting to know you and hearing more about what's going on at the high school. And then, Mrs. Coleman, I think you're going to have to get up again because we have the pleasure of welcoming a new representative from Woodland this evening as well, Mr. Bowman. Round two.
Shouldn't have said that. Didn't accept it. You have it all memorized from the floor?
I state your name. I, I will vote.
Deusamnly swear.
Deusamnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I state your name.
I, I will vote.
Deusamnly swear.
Deusamnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Described by law.
Described by law.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
I'm not disqualified as a voter.
I'm not disqualified as a voter.
I'm not disqualified due to conviction.
I'm not disqualified due to conviction.
Of, of a crime or offense.
Of a crime or offense.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially and justly.
And justly and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Bowman. We're very excited to, to work with you as well. And we also would like to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Heidi Marie Wood, who served with us for many years as, with the Woodland representative. So we thank her for her years of service. Moving along to section five, future dates and miscellaneous information, just wanted to draw everyone's attention to a couple of things. This Friday, there is a pop-up vaccine clinic that's happening in the high school cafeteria from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So another way to, to get vaccinated if you have not already. And that on the 6th, there's an early dismissal, and the 11th, there is no school for students. So just to be aware of that as well. Moving on to section six, routine board business. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the August 30th, 2021 regular board meeting?
A second.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have moved to section seven, our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the evening. The meeting, or excuse me, the public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community an opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate clarifying communication will go out later in the week, and for more general concerns, they may be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. So if someone would like to come and make a public comment, can do so now. Okay, then. It's much easier when we're not on Zoom, and I can see whether anyone's going to stand up or not. I, I appreciate that. I am going to, oh, no, that's all right. Your report is pretty quick. We'll do section eight, the superintendent's report. Dr. McTell.
Okay. So the September 2021 enrollment report will be presented at the October meeting. The same goes for the school safety drill, the suspension report, as well as the anti-bullying. Based on the time in which this meeting is occurring, the month is not yet finished. So in order for us to have a complete report, we will be covering that in the October meeting. Section 8.05 is a first reading of policy 1648.13, which is a mandated policy, which speaks to school employee vaccination requirements. And that is attached in your board docs.
And that is the policy that we were discussing during committee of the whole as well. All right, now we come to section nine, student reports.
So I'm just going to be going over some important athletic events and honors that we've had in high school so far this September. On September 14th, senior Phoebe Burkhart had her 300 save in field hockey. She was also nominated as one of the top 100 goalies to watch out for in New Jersey on NJ.com. Junior Lily Battaloni was nominated as the Colonial Conference Field Hockey Player of the Week this past week. On September 24th, the field hockey team had a huge win against Maple Shade. They won 5-1. Junior Battaloni had one goal and an assist. Junior Meem McConnell had one goal and two assists. Freshman Peyton Ryan had one goal and one assist. Sophia, junior Sophia Mansalini had two goals and one assist, and senior Phoebe Burkhart had five saves to secure the win. Senior Reagan Riley was nominated for top 100 goalkeepers to watch out for this season on NJ.com, as well as sophomore Avery Solenberger was nominated as one of the top midfielders in New Jersey on NJ.com. Senior Emmy Waldron was nominated as being one of the Colonial Conference Players of the Week on the Courier-Post on September 27th. Girls' soccer had a huge win against a rival Gateway on September 17th. They won 6-1. Senior Emma Boss had one assist. Senior Emmy Waldron had two goals and one assist. Freshman Gabby Brudon had one goal and one assist. Senior Maddie Iffey had one goal and one assist. Sophomore Avery Solenberger had one assist. Sophomore Ally Rudio had one goal, and senior Reagan Riley had nine saves in net. The boys' cross-country team is 2-0 on their season in their conference meets. The team is led by Elijah Forrest, Ben Auerbach, Tim Haas, Santiago Caballero, Jeff Bellevins, Nate Iffey, and Damian DePinto. At the South Jersey shootout on September 18th, 10 of, 10 of the 12 boys medaled, and all 12 of them ran personal bests on the 5K course. Senior Ryan Rogers is currently leading the football team in tackles, and junior Dyer Talbert is leading in all-purpose, all-purpose yards. Girls' tennis had an amazing match against Cherry Hill West. They won 5-0. Senior Chloe Rogowski, junior Audrey Bonzak, senior Sarah Johnson, sophomore Harper Allendorfer, junior Maddie Corey, junior Abigail Immer, and sophomore Poppy Marish all contributed to this win. Sophomore Emma Hastings currently has the most kills and blocks for girls' volleyball. Sophomore Brielle Baiki also has the most for assists. Senior Juan Gallardo has had a very impressive season so far with 10 goals and four assists. He was also just named Colonial Conference Player of the Week by NewJersey.com.
I will be going over the extracurricular activities that have already happened in the small amount of time we've already have, but a lot has happened. Ms. Heineken is starting meetings for the Knitwick Crochet Club and is also inviting students to join the Panther Pantry Crew. From September 14th through the 24th, Mr. Fieldman ran a donation fundraiser with the Social Justice League, and they connected necessary items for the refugees from Afghanistan. The Social Justice, Justice League will have a big meeting run by Mr. Fieldman after eighth period tomorrow, Tuesday. The Interact Club is hosting the Fall Blood Drive on Tuesday, October 12th, in the CHS gym, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This Thursday, the 30th, there will be a meeting for anyone who wants to be a part of the chess club run by Ms. Waller. The Fellowship of Christian Athletes will be meeting for their first meeting tomorrow at 7:30 a.m. in the community room with Mr. McKinney. This Friday morning, student council will hold their first meeting open to all students. Mr. Dorney and Mr. McKinney held the first informational meeting for the seniors' trip last Thursday. And regarding our school musicals, the high school has started rehearsing for A Midsummer's Night Dream, and the middle school has held auditions for Honk the Musical. The Spanish club started holding meetings to organize a celebration for Hispanic Heritage Month and is planning to hold a celebration on October 15th in the Night Park Pavilion, pending approval from the Night Park Board. That is all.
Thank you very much. I was just writing down some of the dates. Thank you very much, please.
Any questions about the blood drive? Would you have any answer?
Possibly. I'm assuming community members can participate. Is there anything we need to do to be allowed in the building to do that?
I, we held a meeting with Mr. Herman, and I am pretty sure it is only open to students and staff of the high school, and also staff of the middle school. And the students have to be at least 16 years of age with the consent form from their parents. If they're 17 or 18, they can just sign up on their own.
So as always, you are more than welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our meeting, but we also know that you guys, as seniors, often have a lot of things to do. So if you would like to duck out now, we will not be offended. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Moving on to section 10, the Business Administrator Board Secretary Report, Mrs. Coleman.
This evening, I have the August 2021 monthly transfer report, the August 2021 secretary treasurer's reports, cash reports, and your financials, as well as the August Student Activities Report, and a listing of the September 2021 purchase orders and warrants to be paid. All these items, 10.01 through 10.06, are up for approval in the next section.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleman. Moving to section 11, Buildings, Grounds, and Finance. Mr. Craig, can you present, please?
The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers, and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. So today, 11.2 to 11.9 is the approval of Ms. Coleman's report that she just shared. 1110 is a modification to our contract with ESS, ESS, the paraprofessional group, to allow for remote substitutes, either full or half-day, to provide some of that flexibility when, if we have students that have to quarantine. 11.11 is approval of the 2021-2022 budget calendar, which I understand by approving and having this set, we get some Q-SAC points, so good, good job there. 11.12, the Ostrom family is graciously donating a cello to the middle school music department, so we thank them for their donation and the cello. 11.13, 1113, is the use of the Sharp facility for the gospel ministries to children. This is an agreement that has been going on, I think, for quite some time.
Yeah.
So just approving it for this year, starting October 15th and going through April 8th of 2022. And that is it for this, so I'm seeking approval of items 11.1 to 1113.
Oh, well, there we go. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Yes.
The gospel ministries, the information that was provided to us, unless it changed today, their certificate of insurance doesn't reflect adequate insurance limits. They're, they're one-tenth of what we ask for. So until they can provide a, a certificate with adequate coverage, I would suggest that we not approve that at this point in time.
They have been contacted, and my understanding is that they're in the process of getting that. I was out last week for three days, but nothing has come into my office. But they are, and they've been doing this for 20 years. So I, I would assume that we will get the information, but I'll leave it up to the board.
Has the, has something, if they've been doing it for that long, has something changed with their insurance? I'm just confused.
No, it's just typically what we ask for in the use of facilities policy is the $500,000, million dollar, single liability limit, I hope I'm saying it correct. I'm looking at the insurance person.
Yeah, million dollar.
Yeah, theirs, theirs was lower, so they probably just went to the insurance and got like the generic setup.
So they got the 500?
They have $500,000, a million, Mr. Stotts.
Yeah, their, their coverage says $100,000. We require a million dollars per person.
So Dame's shooting her premises as 100,000.
Okay. So, okay.
Okay, I'll make that motion to table item 11.13.
All right, so there, there's a motion to table item 11.13. Do we then vote, correct?
Yes.
So roll call?
Can we, can I ask some questions?
I need a second.
Can I ask a question first before we go with that motion?
You can't, you can't question motions to table.
All right.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I got, I got. The second from Fiona.
Okay. Now we need a roll call.
Mr. Chu?
No.
Mr. Craig? Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Severino?
Did we have time to ask questions before this, or we did not? This is, so we just, this is just a table. I am voting on that.
Correct.
That's what I'm doing.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Caden?
Yes. So now we are looking for approval of items 11.01 to 11.12. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
No.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I mean, I do want to ask about that, that agenda item that was just tabled. So this would mean then that the gospel ministries of children, they would not have access to the Sharp School Classroom until presumably after our next board meeting?
Correct. So I, the program, I guess they run after school and with the children, would be on hold until we get an updated insurance certificate.
Okay. And so you, you've, that you've been in contact with them about the insurance?
I emailed the director, the Buildings and Grounds Office, somebody who works with Keith, who gets these forms in.
Okay.
I did email him, because he's got the contact information for these people.
I mean, is there the, like, how long have they been working with the district?
Ever since I've been here.
Is there, I mean, you know, granted, I fully respect the, Mr. Stotts's concerns about our insurance policy, but I also recognize that, like, this is probably a, a, a program that's looked forward to by a lot of folks. I mean, if we table it, can we then have a special board meeting beforehand if they get the insurance information in?
Yeah, we just need 48 hours notice to advertise a special board meeting.
Do we even need to, I mean, I know we've, we have retroactively done use of facilities, things in the past, when everything has been met. So if they...
Can you phrase that just a little bit differently, that it's, it's approved pending receipt of the, of the insurance?
Right.
That the use of the facility will be effective when the proper certificate insurance is received?
Sorry, I, I don't think I caught exactly what you said, but I think we're on the same page, basically.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're not there. I just don't want to say you've got the approval.
Right.
And they show up whatever day they're, they're going to use it without having given us the certificate of insurance.
Right, right.
I just want to make sure that that, that happens.
Right, right. So I, I think I'm, I'm in agreement with you. If we can structure or add an agenda item here where we have a, I don't know, however you want to word it, but yeah, tentative approval, given, you know, that will go into check once they provide proof of, of adequate insurance, so that, you know, they can begin their program hopefully by the 15th, if they get their, their, what was it, ducks in a row? I don't know if that's all, is that allowable?
Yeah, I, I did add that language, so we're going to need an...
Now we need to do another.
We need another.
I'm getting lots of practice with this tonight.
My secretary's going to kill me in the morning.
Would you like to make the motion to put, to put it back on?
Yes.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, but she's going to kill me in the morning, because this is crazy. So now I'm going to do a separate motion to approve this item by itself.
Oh, by itself?
Because, because you already made a motion for 11.01 through 11.12.
Okay, so then, would we?
You're approving it pending, so that's a different item.
Okay, so would we vote?
So do we need to, do we need to vote on the other ones first? Yes.
Oh, I thought we just did. Yes, you do.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you did.
That's okay. Let's do roll call for approving items 11.01 to 11.12.
Okay. Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. And now?
I guess now I'll make a motion to approve item 11.13, I guess with additional language.
Is that, is that it, or is it a motion to putting it back on? Because we removed it, we tabled it. Do we have to make a motion to untable it?
It's a new.
It's a new item altogether.
It's a new item, so if I would make a motion to...
Okay, so then I'll do it. Roger, sorry about that. I was confused. I was confused. Like I said, it's a lot of practice with Robert's rules today. Okay, so now we need a motion to approve Item 11.13 with its amendments. Do we have that motion?
Well, Roger made the first.
Roger made the first. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Again, Beth, I guess, could you read out the amendments that you...
What does it say?
I should put move on the recommendation superintendent to approve Gospel Ministry. Basically what's there, and I put approval pending the correct insurance certificate received by the district.
Okay.
If that's doable for everyone? Okay.
Did we get a second?
Yes, I got...
So now we...
Roger and Matt, so now I need a roll call.
Roll call. Oh, my goodness.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry? Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. All right. Thanks for hanging with us, everyone. Section 12, the Curriculum Committee. Ms. Severino, can you present, please?
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction and co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. So tonight, 12:02, there are no elementary or, oh, there are middle school field trips. There's no elementary school field trips. 12.03, there's a middle school field trip. 12.04, high school field trip. 12.05, an overnight field trip for the Model UN program, and that is running from November 18th through November 21st, led by Ms. Balaban. 12.06 is home instruction placement. I'm sorry, that's out of district placement. I apologize. Or maybe it's home instruction. Either way, doesn't matter. 12.07, senior privilege. 12.08 is the high school theatrical performance. On October 29th, Midsummer Night's Dream, directed by Ms. Whitman, will be performed in Knights Park. So seeking approval of Items 12.02 to 12.08.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, I abstain. But I don't have to.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. And Section 13 is the Personnel Committee. I'll be taking over for Ms. Sheridan Celia this evening. So the Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Items 13.02 and 13.03 are resignations. And, excuse me, Items 13.02, 03, and 04 are all resignations. 13.05 and 06 are, and New Jersey Family Leave Act, or Family Leave, Leaves. 13.07 is hiring Jennifer Campbell as a school psychologist. 13.08 is the hiring of a preschool master teacher. 13.09, and I'm just going to kind of continue this. 13.09 through 13.11 are hiring some replacement teachers for those teachers that are out on leave. 13.12 are, is the addition of another 2021 high school permanent building substitute. 13.13 is the addition of another elementary school permanent building substitute teacher. 13.14 is a revised contract. 13.15 and 16 are lunchtime playground assistants for Zane North and Sharp, and 13.17 are some elementary lunch volunteers at Garfield. 13.18 are some middle school athletic stipends. 13.19 are athletic event personnel. 13.20 are the high school non-athletic stipends, and 13.21 is the addition of another summer CST member that just needed to, to make sure that she was getting paid for her services. 13.22 is the recommendation to approve Lamar Long as our communications graphic designer on an as-needed basis. 13.23 are some substitutes and tutors, and there is no travel expense form at this time. So we are looking for approval of Items 13.01 to 13.23 this evening. Sorry, yes. That's okay. So...
Can I ask a clarifying question for the vote, or do I have to wait?
You can. Sorry, I don't know what you just said. Can you say it again?
Can I ask a clarifying question about one of the items?
In a minute. You can, yes. So actually, I'm going to say that one more time and ask, we're going to, we're pulling 13.22, so we're just asking for approval of Items 13.01 through 13.21, and then also 13.23. Do we have a motion for that? And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
Is the master teacher position in 13.08, is that the person who's coordinating the program, or that's a teacher position?
I hear.
I think it's the same thing, but I'm going to have Dr. Dowell.
I'm sorry, Sarah, can you say that one more time?
The preschool, 13.08 that we're approving, that master teacher, is that a teacher position, or is that the preschool coordinator position? Are they both the same thing?
It's a, it's the equivalent of an instructional coach, but for preschool. So in preschool, they're called master teachers. In elementary and middle and high, they're called instructional coaches.
So this is not the person overseeing the preschool program? That's what I was checking. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I do have some questions about just like the, the hiring of, I guess, additional schools, lunch aids. My understanding is that there's kind of like the difficulty in getting additional staff, just the, the market for, for those folks is pretty tough right now. Is that, is the school district still actively looking to hire more lunch aids at, at the moment?
Yes, in general, lunch, or what we have come to call them feedings, they are not popular periods of the day. So one of the expectations that we have given all of our school leaders is to actively recruit so that our educators do not fill those specific roles during that particular time. So they're going to continue to actively recruit until they, they have met the need.
Has there been, I guess, much success or any sort of like hope for finding additional staff?
We're making progress. Some of our schools are doing better than others, but we are making progress. It's a challenging time. I think that we're, we're meeting the, everything is converging at the same time. Individuals are coming back to work. We have increased the rates for some of these roles and responsibilities in order to actively recruit to fill them, and we are hoping, or hopeful, that we'll be able to get there. In the interim, our full-time educators are filling in those voids if we do not have designated lunchroom aides or playground assistants.
So from what I'm hearing, the, the hiring is done on a school-to-school basis, not at the district level for, for lunch aids?
That's correct.
Is there, I guess, is it provided by the district? Is there a specific reason why it's done at the school level versus at, like, the district level?
Because every school has a different configuration for lunch, and every school has different needs. And then some schools have struck a balance between volunteers and between their lunchroom aides, so the schools are really identifying what they need, and the district is providing the financial support for them to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry? Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 14, the Policy Committee. I will also run through this one as well. I did want to note, we, we did already approve the first reading of, of one of the policies in the superintendent's report. It's just in a different place, since we're still kind of getting used to having a policy committee, but it did get approved. We're moving on from that to 14.02. These are all second readings of policies from, from last month's meeting. I'm not going to run through all of them again. 14.03 is regulations for some of those policies, and they only require one reading. So we are looking for approval of Items 14.02 and 14.03 this evening. Is there a motion? And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call. Sorry, go ahead.
A quick question about, actually, the, the policy that was during the superintendent's report. That, that was a first reading, right? So it'll require a second reading?
Correct.
How's that going to work with, because it's supposed to start, I think that policy is supposed to start mid-October. How's that work with our next board meeting being after when the policy is supposed to start?
So because it's mandated, the board can increase the level of stringency, but they can't lessen. So at the minimum, the policy is the policy unless the board wants to take a more rigorous posture.
So essentially, it's already in effect, basically? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry? Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman? Mrs. Caden?
Yes. There is no HIB report, correct, for this month? So the miscellaneous section we're, we're going to move through, which brings us to Section 16. Our next time for public comment, please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. If anyone would like to make a public comment, now would be the time.
How you doing? Mike Avery, 238 Harvard Avenue. I've tried to reach out to everyone in the correct order to get additional information on the window policy, and at every step, I've received a handful of emails and then silence. I'm not saying we have to open windows. I'm saying if we're making policy for not, all the questions I have and many more should be answered and should be public. I've looked through the documents, the reopening plan, they're not in there. I've asked Mr. Higginbotham, he honestly stopped answering my emails. I have reached out to Dr. McDowell as well, have yet to have a response, and then you responded earlier today. I'm not sure why, if we're making a policy like this, we don't have answers to very straightforward questions. I don't know whether I should just hand this over or read them aloud. I don't know how this goes. Okay. I'm not expecting any of these to be answered now, but these are the questions that I don't understand why I don't have answers to. What does prioritizing outside air mean? What is the percentage of fresh air brought into the classrooms with a certain amount of time? If you tell me 100% of fresh air is coming into this building every hour, great. That sounds pretty good. If you tell me it's 25%, I think we should know that. How long does it take to replace all building air with fresh air? While the ASHRI standards say MERV 13, if you actually look deeper into their document, it suggests MERV 14. My understanding is we do not have MERV 13, and I'm wondering why. They also suggest in-room HEPA UV machines at the terminal of all ventilation. I'm pretty sure we don't have them. We did put them into the lunchrooms, advanced filtration, but we do not have them in the rooms. And now at Tatum, they're eating in the, in the classrooms. So why don't we have them? If these numbers have been calculated, why are they not shared with us openly? If they have not, then how do we know we're making policy that actually is in the best interest of our children? The only note that the supervisor of Buildings and Grounds said to me was air quality, and it's mentioned, yes, we want to protect children and staff members with severe asthma. So I followed up with these questions and received no answer. Do we know the preferences of the employees and parents of children with asthma? Have they been asked? If everyone with severe asthma says, let's please open the windows instead, we should know that. If they all say no, and there's four of them, maybe that's policy change. If it's 100 of them, it's another policy, but we don't know those numbers. Do we know what schools with classrooms would even be impacted? Maybe no one in Tatum would be impacted, or no one in the middle school, but we don't know. We're making a blanket policy for the entire school district without knowing real quantitative numbers. And if the question and concern has to do so much with air quality, if you go on to the historical data and look on your phone, because it's there, we're in the green a lot of the time. So yes, I understand with wildfires and smoke blowing across the country, we've had yellow and red days, but as of right now, I believe we're in green. So why are we keeping them closed? If this is such a concern, why are those students going out to play gym outside? Why have they always gone out to play gym outside and recess outside? If we're so concerned with these children's asthma, why are we letting them out at all? We can't open a window three inches in a classroom. And how does this risk change across the school year? There's asthma, or there's allergens in some seasons and not in others, or much less. So how are we making a policy like this without actually providing parents with this information? I'm assuming responding to a parent who asked very clear, direct questions and received no answers. I know you mentioned that you believe direct answers were given. On these points, no direct answers were given in an email to me at any point in the last two months as I've been trying to find these answers. I'm not saying we have to open every windows, and I'm going to go around to every school and open every window, but if we're making policy, how do we not have these basic answers to basic questions about the health of our buildings? That's all I got. Thank you.
I mean, I'm really just going to look at you because you're the other. Would you like to speak?
I actually did have an elaborate speech typed up and about the importance of having outdoor lunch for the, all the schools. In listening to the way you guys... I'm sorry, Daniel, Daniel Smith, 225 Lincoln Avenue. So as I was saying, I did have an elaborate speech. It was typed up about the importance of having outdoor lunch for all the schools, all the elementary schools, at least for the next one or two months before a vaccine is available for that age group. In listening to the way you guys conduct business and the planned COVID protocols, which are encouraging, and also about how much the, the board obviously does care about the health and safety of the students, I do think at this point, my statement would be superfluous. I do just want to repeat the unpleasant reminder that the indoor lunch policy at four out of five of the elementary schools is the Achilles' heel of all the protective policies that you are, have gone to great lengths to create. Thank you so much.
Did you want to say anything or no? Okay. Thank you for coming and making public comments. As, as I said before, as you could see, everyone is taking notes. We will be discussing things further, and we'll reach out if, if, if it warrants. Moving on to Section 17, motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.